All right, welcome everyone. It is the regular city council meeting for Monday, December thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one. We'll call the meeting to order. If you can all stand up and say, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and in whose sovereignty and justice we are. You? Can I have a roll call, please?
J T Thompson?
Yes.
Richard Peterson?
Yes.
Matt Torardi?
Yep.
Adam Reiter?
Yes.
Matt Peterson?
Yes.
Approval agenda. Seem to have any questions or comments? Anything regarding that? If not, then we'll ask for a motion for approval.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Can you roll call, please?
Rich Peterson?
Yes.
Matt Peterson?
Yes.
Adam Reiter?
Yes.
J T Thompson?
Yes.
Matt Torardi?
Yep.
Number five, I believe we can skip. So number six, the consent agenda. Anybody have any questions or concerns? Any discussion needed with anything regarding that? If not, have a motion for approval.
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Second?
Second.
Can you roll call, please?
Matt Torardi?
Yep.
Adam Reiter?
Yes.
Matt Peterson?
Yes.
J T Thompson?
Yes.
And Richard Peterson?
Yes.
Number seven, discuss and consider approval of payment request number six, the amount of forty-two thousand, forty-five dollars and forty-one cents for B W C excavating L C. And Mark here, here. Is there anything you want to add? Is that the final?
It's not the final. Still gotta pay for the flushing hydrants and the mailbox pad. All that has been put in. Did a final walkthrough today with our inspector and Brandon from B W C. And I've got a punch list here of items that we've identified that they need to take care of. Nothing really major. I did talk with Brandon a little bit about the seating situation, okay? So obviously, actually, mics are coming up on Wednesday, right?
Yeah.
It's good.
Yeah.
Mike's blowing away.
Just kidding, of course. If it doesn't come up or go dormant, or you know, for some reason, that doesn't happen. He knows, his seating contractor knows that they're gonna be in there in the spring and have to reseed it, is what it comes down to. So they're fully aware of that. It would be warranty work. So I think we're covered on that. Did notice some areas where the cedar had probably taken an equipment over some of the handicap ramps at the southwest corner and the northwest corner of Hope and Marvin Drive there. A little part cracked off. Probably gonna have to replace that. I don't know that I'll have them, require them to do that until spring. Kind of see if there's any other warranty work that has to be completed. There's a list of other things. They've gotta get their tracer wires properly terminated in the valve boxes, get the tracer wire access boxes by the flushing hydrants and the fire hydrants. Let's see here. Those are really the, the big items there.
The sidewalk intersections get done too. I thought there was supposed to be something with the, just like the intersections or something on the sidewalks.
Yeah.
Yeah, those are done.
Yeah, those are done. That's what I'm talking about, the part where it cracked off.
Yeah, that's where you're at, yeah, okay.
Yeah, so. Overall, I think it looks really good. The paving job looks really nice and smooth. That'll be a road that's gonna be really nice in the future for you guys, so. Do you guys have any questions for me?
I guess the final payment, is that covered in spring? When we got all this little stuff taken care of, or?
No, the final-
Final payment, we pay that, and how do we maintain, make sure that stuff gets done?
Hold back.
Yeah, what I do, the process that we go through here is to, you know, you guys, I'll, I'll have you guys probably in January approve the project finally complete. We've got a couple little items that'll be on a pay request then. After that, we hold retainage for thirty days. I don't release retainage or recommend release of the full retainage until, I would assign a value to any punch list items. They're gonna be in on Wednesday is what they said. They tried to take care of some of them, so I'm gonna get an email out tomorrow. Whatever's not taken care of, I try to value it and I hold back double the value of what I think the punch list items are, and that is not released to them.
Okay.
So, end of the process there.
Yeah, no, I, I'm happy with how everything turned out.
Well, this could, I think, pretty much the- I wasn't, maybe my bad by not looking at the prints or something, but I'm gonna call it on the south side of Marvin Lane, you know, the lots are more level with the street compared to the north side. I was surprised at how low they are compared to the street.
So you're talking on actually the north side of the low part, though, right?
Yeah, I had a couple people ask me about that.
And I guess I need educators so I can answer when I get asked.
Yeah.
I don't know myself.
Three people ask me that.
Why, I assumed that they would, that there wouldn't be fill brought in and that would just be-
Yeah.
Dig your basement, you might have a little extra dirt.
Yeah.
You know?
I had a discussion with Cody about that, and there's a couple different ways. It can be done both ways where the, either the city, you're the developer now, sometimes the developer of subdivision will develop pretty much the right of way and then leave the remaining portion for the individual homeowners, homeowners to actually bring the fill in or whatever they want to do with the grading of their yard there. I looked at that area and I know that we're lower than the other lots. I think you're gonna have the ability, and what I recommend to you is to not allow any of the other people that are purchasing and developing their lots to take any of the soil outside. Anything that would be left over would be brought over there and that'll help that out as far as being able to make those. Yep, go ahead.
How does the finished product look compared to the elevation blueprints?
So what do you, I guess I'm trying to do the-
Is it the grade like it's supposed like the blueprints?
Is it laid, is it laid accordingly?
It's laid according to the blueprint.
So why, why is it, why is, why does the finished grade require fill?
Well, within the actual right of way or the contract that we had with B W C, or the way we designed the plan was to have our grading extents and the project extents be to like the right of way line. So we did not do a mass design of a complete grading plan. It would have been a situation where we would have had to have the city bring in some extra fill to fill that in a little bit.
They had a good spoil pile up there.
Could that have came from that sponsored project area? Because, because either way, let's say the city's gonna have, like you said, gonna have to bring fill in, or you're gonna sell a lot to a homeowner and say, well, and then they're gonna have to pay extra because they gotta haul fill in, so. It seems kind of, again, I know it's after fact and, but it just doesn't seem like, I don't know why it was designed that way, is my question.
Yeah, and I talked to Cody about that, you know, I asked him, is this a standard of care? You know, did we follow the standard of care here? Cause I've heard some questions about that also. So this isn't the first time I've heard you guys talk about that. He says it is. It is a standard of care where, you know, just on this project, the way we designed it was to actually have the right of way, the extents of the grading operation. We did not extend it to the entire back of the lots. Now I'm hearing what you're saying here.
Yeah.
You're concerned that you're putting extra burden on-
It's either the city or, it's either the city or the landlord who's gonna buy the lot.
That's correct.
I guess assumptions are what gets you in situations like this, but-
Yeah.
My assumption was that the design would be, was finished.
Yeah.
Unless you guys are thinking different, you know?
I guess I go back to, you know, just kind of my experience in that field a little bit is, you know, you can do like they call it a daylight basement where it might work out well for somebody where they wanna have, you know, you don't have your egress, you have your egress windows in there, but they have a daylight, they call it on the backside where it's, you know, your grade is four or five foot below, you know, where you're finished. So you can put some windows in there or something, you know, maybe that's something too.
And I don't know, that, that's the thing. There is, and I'm not sure-
So there is ways to work around that.
But you also have water dish line right there too, that-
Yeah.
Yeah, the idea, you know, could you do a walkout basement there and still have them safe with the water that's planning to go around it? You know, there might be some options too with part of the sponsored project where if there is spoils that are not needed on site, that's where they can be deposited. I think you do have the ability to have some of that topsoil that was spread amongst the other lots. You know, as people get in there, they start building, they're digging out their basement, gonna be a lot of extra materials there. That can also help the situation, you know, as you go through the process of selling these lots.
So that's something we should, we need to get with Cheryl and Threesaw and then have that conversation. So before we sell a lot, maybe that needs to be added to our covenants or whatever that, maybe it already is, I don't remember that dirt. That material can't leave.
Yeah, I don't remember it out there.
So you're saying if you dig, dig a basement that, if you buy the lot, you dig the basement out, that extra dirt has to stay?
In that sub- you can use anything you want, it's your dirt, but if you have any extra, you can't take it out of the sub.
Can't take it out, has to be left.
And there's gonna be a lot of that, you know, with all the other lots.
Okay, yeah, it's not uncommon.
No.
So then we'd have to designate-
And they're probably be glad they don't have to get rid of it somewhere else.
True, we gotta find an area that's not an eyesore to be-
It'd be one of those lots, we'd have to work with Mark and his company on where would we want to put that material first.
Okay, forgot.
Any extra, any extra dirt.
Yeah.
Where on the subdivision would we want it put?
Yeah, put it there in a systematic approach. It's not gonna have to be, you know.
Yeah.
But I think we can work through it.
Yeah, and like, you know, like Mark said too, we got that sponsored project yet coming too. So that, there's gonna be some, there's gonna be some excavation there too that we're gonna have to find a spot for, so I think that could easily be-
Yeah.
Hauled down.
I think it's possible. I have not talked to them about the exact final numbers. Is there gonna be some spoil that we can take down there or not, but we can look into that anyway. And even if it's something that there isn't spoil, we could always, it may not be an eligible cost for the actual sponsored project, but to have them bring some fill in that area since they're working in that area.
I think we should definitely have discussion at that point.
Yeah.
Yeah, I-
You're not gonna get any cheaper to move it at that, that yard.
Hopefully someone's there.
No, that's definitely, needs to be an option for sure. Yeah, I agree. Before we, before we look at bringing, I think too though, you know, let's, let's go through the project, see what we have left from there. And then, you know, like Mark said too, once people start buying those lots, there's gonna be, there's gonna be backfill there.
And the other subdivision, that's the way it was, that material couldn't be even, it all worked out just fine. I just needed explanation so I could answer questions like-
Yeah, I had several people ask me about that. And you drive in there, it does look kind of-
Yeah, it steps down, for sure.
Yeah. Yeah, it's right between the two streets, though.
Yeah.
But it's also, you know, I mean, it also meets the existing grade too.
Most definitely.
You know, the existing lots in the backside.
It's like you said, you're just going, you know, right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Can we ask on that sponsor, how, any movement on the sponsored project?
That's, that's it. Let's, let's get a motion for approval and then we can move on to that next one. Plus any other discussion needed for this payment request? If not, I will ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve request number sixty on a forty-two thousand, forty-five dollars for one cent to be B W C's.
Second?
I'll second.
Can you roll call, please?
Matt Peterson?
Yes.
J T Thompson?
Yes.
Richard Peterson?
Yes.
Matt Torardi?
Yes.
Adam Reiter?
Yes.
Okay, number eight, update on the sponsored project.
All right, so I touched base with Cody today and we are still at the sixty percent review stage. You remember they, we had gotten together with regulatory officials and, okay, they had, they had had a fifty percent review and there's a lot of items on there and, you know, it needed to get ironed out, what's a must and what's a suggestion, okay? So they came back to us with what the requirements are there. We're working still on getting that response put back to them. We're approaching a time where there's some critical dates that we have to pay attention to. And basically it has to do with, we need to have this project bid and your loan amendment application taken care of by the time you make your first principal payment on your wastewater treatment facility, okay? So when we were first talking about the sponsored project, we didn't know if your first loan payment was gonna be in, it happens June first of the following year after you complete the project. Well, because the wastewater treatment facility project was completed after June first of two thousand twenty-one, your first principal payment will be June first of two thousand twenty-two on the wastewater treatment facility. And in order to have the loan, and when I say loan amendment application, you're amending your wastewater treatment facility loan to add the sponsored project to it. It doesn't actually add to your payment because the sponsored project is the interest. The interest you're paying towards that loan is going towards the sponsored project and it amounts to like ten percent of your principal. I don't know, I didn't talk with Theresa today, but your principal amount that you own that loan, I'm guessing is between around nine hundred thousand and a million dollars. Not quite sure what that is, but what that means, whatever the principal is, you get ten percent of that principal to go towards that sponsored project. So if your principal is nine hundred and forty thousand dollars, then you get ninety-four thousand dollars to go towards the sponsored project. All right? The reason why it's important to, you still have the ability to utilize the program, the sponsored project program. If you don't meet these dates, it's just now, whatever principal payment you make, let's say you pay a hundred thousand dollars down on the loan on June first, okay? And it goes to eight hundred and forty thousand. Now, if you don't have your sponsored project done and the loan amendment done, now you're dealing with, you only get ten percent of eight hundred and forty thousand. So now your sponsored project contribution by the state is eighty-four thousand dollars. So those are the critical dates we're up against. And basically what that means to you and what it means to us and what it means to these regulatory people are when this project, we need to have this project bid by March of two thousand twenty-two, okay? So that's the date that we're gonna be pushing hard. I'm gonna push for a meeting with our regulatory reviewers and just remind them of how critical this is, that this is ironed out and they approve the project that we're working with you guys on by that date. Otherwise it ends up costing you guys grant money essentially, so.
What was the, what was the cost of the project?
Which one?
The sponsored project.
I don't know where we're at right now on the estimate for that. It's gonna be, I think, more than what you, it's more than like the ninety-four thousand dollars, I believe. But I'm not positive on that and I'd have to get back to you with an estimate on what that is, so.
Yeah, I think we were, yeah, we were real close. We were right around that hundred thousand.
Is that what it was?
Yeah.
I don't remember. I know we've had some discussion on, you know, kind of what that would include. And maybe have it modified, but-
Yeah, I don't-
I have, I have to report back to you on that. I'm not sure where that's at right now.
Okay, so March of, March of twenty-two, so that's-
Yeah, that's when we need that bid.
So we're at the sixty percent threshold, so. Does it have to be, I mean, it's probably, I don't know, that to get it bid, it's gotta be at a hundred percent.
Yeah, so what it would be after your, after they approve the sixty percent, then we would submit a pre-bid plan and specification. They approve that, then we get a final plan.
So will it go from sixty to a hundred?
It goes from sixty to pre-bid phase, which is-
Okay.
They, they consider that ninety to a hundred percent, and then the next one is a hundred percent and we're able to bid it.
So once we kind of get past this final?
Yes, yes. So we really need to get this in, get this process going.
Are the regulatory bodies coming back with realistic requests for what the-
Well, originally, we don't believe so. I have not dug in with Kristen and Cody to determine what their thoughts are on the reasonableness of what they're saying are the musts now. So maybe I can report back to you on that when we come back to talk about final completion in January of the harvest types project. I can be a little bit more prepared to talk to you about kind of how, how they're feeling about our ability to meet this March date that we're all shooting for now.
So that'll just be interesting, what seemed like such a good deal, you know, when you-
Well, I've told you how much we bet on it.
How much cheaper we would have got it with all the other work being done compared to now, it's-
In hindsight, I don't know that I would have recommended you follow this path just because of what it's got. Pure business decision for me to administer this sort of a thing, killing us, you know? The costs are just, I'm not, anything I'm doing right now regarding the sponsored project, you're not getting any bills for that.
Nobody's gonna come out of it.
No, this was not, this has not been a good-
We're like the engineers.
Yeah. This has not been a good experience.
You know, you're talking about a hundred thousand dollar job that you would have been the first time with all the other work and-
Right. You just give it for it. Right.
Yeah, because they were already-
And we wouldn't, and we would have been held in either bullshit, you know?
True.
Put yourself fire into it.
It's too late now.
Right, yeah, yeah, it is.
You know?
So, okay, all right, sounds good. We'll plan on that then, yeah, when you, when we meet again.
Sounds good. I know, March is gonna be here real soon.
Yeah.
I can't believe it's the last full week of work before Christmas.
Yeah, it just seems, yeah, it just seems like it's so hard to get, you know, any kind of back and forth communication, any kind of steady communication, you know, and then, and then it seems like when they come back with something, it's something that's just off the wall.
Yeah.
It's just always something else, it seems like, yeah.
Something really loud.
After a koi pond.
Right, right, yeah, yeah, so.
Well, we're committed to seeing this thing through though and trying to hit our dates and do our best, so.
Okay, sounds good. All righty, well.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks for explanations.
Yeah, appreciate that. Have a good night, everyone.
You too. Try to save it.
Same for us.
Thank you.
Okay, number nine, consider approval of appointing Teresa Weinchenk to the Jackson County Economic Alliance Board for the year two thousand twenty-two. Obviously she was, she's been on the board for the last year or so. I haven't heard any major negatives or anything as far as you're not wanting to do it, so.
Well, she's not here to defend herself, right?
Right. Very bold.
I mean, how do they, I guess, how they get on that? I mean, what's, is it every year?
I'm not sure. I think they have to be up in their-
Yeah, I think it is a yearly process of being reappointed. As far as how she initially got along, I, obviously she took Patty's spot, Patty was on there. And then she, she stepped up when Patty stepped down. So I don't know if that's, if they just kind of pick and choose or how, I guess they go.
I guess it doesn't matter to me if she wants to-
Yeah, if she's wanting to do it, I think we, we need to support it as a city as much as we can, it's wonderful.
Yeah, and that's probably the biggest thing, is having some representation there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it is. If we're, if we're working with them anyways and having somebody that's on board, you know, on the board, I think that helps. Well, she ain't here to say no, I guess, right?
Nope. Somebody wanna make a motion for that?
I'll make a motion to appoint Teresa Weinchenk to the Jackson County Economic Alliance Board for year two thousand twenty-two.
Second?
Second.
Can you roll call, please?
Adam Reiter?
Yes.
Matt Torardi?
Yep.
Matt Peterson?
Yes.
J T Thompson?
Yes.
Richard Peterson?
Yes.
Number ten, discuss and consider moving forward with the I I S C projects for spring two thousand twenty-two. So this was our crosswalk signs that we had.
No, I don't think so.
That's not it.
This is the key pilot beautiful, or the day prior.
Oh.
This prior had sent an email to Teresa, says, as we look into spring, wanted to double check.
That's ten.
Yeah, number ten. There's certain projects that were currently scheduled for spring and there's others to consider.
The pedestrian trail.
I remember the pedestrian trail, I remember the back campground.
Oh, okay.
The Copper Creek Campground, Rainy Park. Yeah. Copper Creek Campground.
What was on our, it was on our list of items.
Yeah.
When we went around. I don't remember where it rated or anything.
I don't remember.
It might have been before you got back. Remember all posters that were hanging around?
Yep, yep.
You know, we went around and came up with projects and then we all went around and put a tally on them.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Ones with the most interest, that pushed to the top.
So these must be these and, uh, the-
I don't remember how we got it.
Well, this was the, this is the-
For the students who are helping.
Students for the University of Iowa, and then we had to give them our top five.
We paid projects out of that.
Right, right. Yep.
So it says discuss moving forward, forward, so what are we moving forward on, I guess?
Well, with their spring semester.
They're gonna work on that.
They'll, yeah, so, so these two, the first two right now are the two, I guess they'll kind of take first. And then I think, last I heard, kind of depending on class size or, or interest, the other two might be a possibility as well.
Well, I mean, park and rec program, what would they?
I don't, I don't remember what we, I don't-
Assuming branding is like branding, like-
Branding would be, yes.
Marketing, yeah.
Marketing.
Yes.
Park and rec program.
Yeah, the park and rec, I don't remember exactly what we, what we were doing with that one. Obviously the pedestrian trails, that was, that was connecting Copper Creek to West Side, to the walking path.
Oh, okay.
And then the Copper Creek Campground was the lots we've talked about.
Yeah, like we were down there, you know, where the little pavilion is down there, that plastics.
Oh, yeah.
You know, putting a few campsites there. We keep talking about how Charlotte's always got place. Whether it's people just working, like doing construction and wanna-
Oh, yeah.
Place for a camper or whatever, we gotta have an, I don't know what we said.
There's quite a bit of area there, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So those were, those were some of the options that we gave them on our list. Obviously they did the first one already with the marketing for the new subdivision.
Yeah.
Yeah, obviously David and Theresa have been talking about it.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so obviously there is a cost to it, but it's, it's pennies on the dollar, you know, compared to what you do pay.
Yeah, cause you're on students doing current.
Right. And they are working on the, they are currently working on the mapping too.
O D G I.
Yeah, yeah. They're still working on that, last I, last I heard, so.
I don't have any issue with it, I guess.
I think it's a current relationship to keep moving forward on it.
Yeah, I, yeah, I think both of those projects would be nice to, you know, look into or see what.
Just do what it takes to bring the tuition.
Yeah.
Yep, I think it's a good investment. Okay, so if that's, I guess, you know, if we could need a motion for that, I guess.
We need a motion for that, or it just says discuss?
Consider moving forward, just kind of get a reply to Dave.
Yeah, sounds like we're game, huh? Yeah, we gotta lose with it. I think that's the consensus, so.
Stick with the top two and then if they got time, continue on or?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, well, the biggest thing I'd need- Yeah, that's, well, the biggest thing, I mean, see if we can see more green.
Okay, alright, sounds good, we'll pass that along. Um, oh, okay, uh, number eleven, update on the Iowa DOT application, um, for RRFB's, um, pedestrian crosses along Highway sixty four. Was there?
Teresa just commented, she sent it on to me today, that, um, the DOT rejecting our application for the installation of the pedestrian beacons. Due to installing the ADA compliant crosswork, crosswalks, these need to be installed in the spring according to I D O T guidelines, and then we have to reapply. So it's a delay because of the crosswalks, that we can't put them in now.
Okay.
Oh, they did those crosswalks.
Maybe they've done everything. No, no, not where they're, not where they're slated to go.
Yeah.
And there's E V A panels, right, is that, that's what they're trying to?
Yeah, there's none in any of those spots.
We've got to do all that.
Go do all that first, and so that the deadline is passed, and we have to reapply for that.
I think we wanna keep moving on that, and there's, you know, I guess we know where part of our sidewalk budget goes next year.
Well, yeah, there you go.
That should be right on top, yeah.
Well, yeah, that's.
Yeah, because we kind of were, you know, we've been being held up by the DOT, obviously, since the summer, we wanted to.
We were talking about that, this.
Yeah, we got the grant, the rural transportation grant.
Two years ago, this whole.
This summer.
Well, they told, that we did get the grant or something, and that's what, are we right on that? We didn't get the grant?
No, we got it.
And it has to be used by it all.
That's what I don't know. That's what I'm thinking, well, they're gonna deny it now and reapply. Teresa said also, if she had any, had any questions or any further discussion on it, give her a call, or she'll be in tomorrow.
Yeah, I guess we'll, I'd like a little more clarification on that too, I guess, as far as what, uh, what our next steps are.
Maybe next meeting, she can just update us again or something.
Yeah. So wondering if.
I think that'd be fine, next meeting.
Yeah.
Tell them that.
Yeah, it's really nothing to table, but, um, yeah, if you want me to, Cheryl, I have them.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Um, okay, we will move on then to number twelve, um, update on the tree ward, uh, and the ordinance.
Yeah, there's a sample ordinance from G WIT that was included in the packets.
Okay.
It's just pretty simple and to the point. She said that if you agree with the ordinance, or she can get the process started, if you wanna modify it in any way, we can make changes, but.
So I read through it, it's pretty straightforward, the only question I had was, who's the city's forester? I mean, it, cause it all refers back to that.
It could be you.
No, thank you.
I think someone would just have to take that role, you know?
Yeah, he just, he just assigns, yeah.
Yeah, that's something, it would have to be an expert, but it would be, yeah.
Somebody just wanna take that responsibility. That's the only question I had, is reading it, it all comes back to that person.
Yeah, I had the same question.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think we gotta get the, cause we got this tree ordinance thing, we gotta get the board set up first, the ordinance, and then we can tie that into the, to the ordinance of the, the tree ordinance. So then the board has authority to go over the, the tree stuff, since we don't have a board, that's what we have. Well, the kind of one says. Item oh one, creation established, terminal office compensation, oh four, duties and responsibilities. And I think the operation, interference with the board, review by council, yeah.
So I guess I do agree with Matt, or Matt a little bit, maybe that needs to be rewarded, the city forester, to, do we have to have that in there?
That's, you, you, if you just have a board, it's, cause all they're gonna do is bring suggestion, bring suggestions and stuff to the council.
Right.
So that's what I do, I, I don't understand the city forester, you know, you just, you just have a chairman of whoever the board is, and.
Well, I think how it's supposed, supposed to operate, or how they do them accordingly, so if someone wants to plant a tree, they're right away, like you had. The ordinance says, no, you can't do that unless you get approval by the board, so they would fill out an application and whatever, then the board would say, yes, you can do that, or no, you can't do that, stuff like that. But yeah, I don't know if we need the actually city forester part in there, or that needs to be rewarded, cause that is kind of.
But just, it just, I don't know, you're, you're not gonna have a, maybe we do, maybe we have several now that would, that are experts in that, but if you just have a, a chairman, you know, of, of that board. I just, just something, I guess that.
So instead of city forester, maybe board chair?
And then maybe there's a reason it's written the way it is, but I just.
There is.
You know?
You consider planting a city forester or something, it has more, a little more stuff on the ball about, about trees compared to.
Really limits, it really limits us to who's gonna be on that board, who's gonna be that individual, and maybe it needs to be that way, I, I just don't know.
Yes and no, or like, like you say, the chairman ain't handy, but.
And then they just, I mean, there's one person responsible for that board.
Well, that's what I'm wondering, you know, there even needs to be, you know, if you have a board, there even needs to be, you know, quote unquote, a chairman or whatever of the board.
And it could just be consensus.
Right.
All of a sudden, you got three young people say, oh, yeah, you can have cottonwoods.
Well, they still bring it, we still have to approve it.
Yeah.
And they might bring that to us, and we say, no, we're not involved in that, that's, they're just there to, to do the diligence and look into it and bring their results to us. I think it's a great, great start, I just, I think just a few questions we need to answer on.
Right. Yeah, if that's, I mean, if that's a reasonable request, I guess.
Yeah, cause if you read in here, yeah, it said the duties, it's a responsibility of the board to study and investigate, and to assist the city forester.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so that almost sounds like it's on somebody on the pay, city payroll.
Or, or somebody that's definitely has an education in it.
Right.
Unless, unless she's meaning, cause I know she's talked like trees and the trees forever, something like that, is that gonna be our, you know, city forester representative, someone from there?
Maybe Cheryl.
Yeah.
Probably the D N R or something like that.
So, and the only other thing, Cheryl, I would say may, maybe it says residents of the city, now, I get that we probably want them to be from the city, but sometimes we run into problems with boards. That we just don't have enough, if we have someone like, example, Craig Ryder, that lives outside of town.
Yeah.
That knows everything about trees, why can't we get him on the board?
Why, I think you're right, we look at our park committees, and we don't, we have all kinds of people involved.
Yeah, we got some events got an expertise or a lot of knowledge or something, why should we, as a city, just cause they live a couple miles outside of town?
Right, yeah, I don't think we should define it that.
Where's that part at?
Uh, it's in the first one, creation established, says, uh, members residents of the city.
Oh, maybe more community members or something.
Yeah, maybe community members, they wouldn't have to be.
Well, Preston Growth and Development isn't residents of the city.
No, I just hate to have a board that's gonna be volunteer, struggling against somebody.
Yeah, I don't think it should be, I don't think it should be that specific.
But overall, I think it looks pretty, just, yeah, that question on that, and then the residents.
The forestry thing, forester thing and the residents.
Yeah, maybe, maybe it just needs to be changed if we're gonna do the trees forever, they, you know, we work with them, I don't. No, it'll be smoky the better, we don't want it smoky the better.
Okay, well, we'll, uh.
Bring it up, and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, you don't wanna be, overall, just feel things.
Bring it back and, with it open there. Um, okay, we'll move on to, uh, thirteen then, uh, on W P P I metering program.
Uh, we contract with W P P I, um, and we pay for the service, um, to have them come occasionally and do meter testing. And, um, they have found some of the, some of the meters hadn't been tested by some time. And out of the random ones that he's checking or continuing his list, um, there's two to three pretty large, cause, um, commercial customers. Who had three phase meters, and the metering wasn't capturing all three phases, so we were losing, um. Revenue be based on usages and all being accounted for.
Okay.
So that will help with, obviously, line loss and a ton of things, so. Um, it's well worth it to have it come down and.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good.
Hit and everything, and I know raised orders on a couple meters that he, you know, has, has, had to use and replenish and has to go, but it'll definitely pay for itself.
Okay.
Well, we wanna make sure we're, it's fair too, to the customers, right, the meters are working, right?
Yeah.
Too awesome to them, that, cause it could be the other way too, right, be overcharging them.
Isn't there a factor on, like you say, whose, uh, line loss, from what we get charged to what we, how much were they saying we're consuming to what we're charging now, and I'm sure that's gotta fall within a certain percentage, right?
It does, and I don't know how.
How, we, we probably try, I'm sure we track that and stuff, but how is that?
I'm not sure if Ray has a way, or if, if he just tracks it and doesn't, it used to be a report that we got back when Gary and Jeff were around.
Yeah.
Always had line losses, it was a big deal, but, I don't know, somehow that hasn't been a real threat that I'm aware of anymore.
Can you, maybe you and Teresa ask some questions about that, and then just report back to us, cause I know that, to me, that's something you'd really want, I'm just gonna throw out three percent, don't hold me to that, I have no idea if that's right, but. You know, a three percent is your guideline, you don't wanna, if you're all of a sudden doing six or seven, something's definitely happened, what is the?
Yeah.
There's gotta be a standard for the city of Preston from Gary and Jeff or something, that it was, and to me, we should look at that, because, you know, maybe it's ten, maybe it's only two.
Right.
But, but what is that standard and, and, and help Ray, who should educate Ray, maybe Ray knows already how to, educate us, you know?
Yeah. Yeah, exactly, heck, I'm not sure.
Yeah.
Wasn't it used to be on the, some of the electric reports, the line loss?
I'm, I'm trying to think, I remember seeing something somewhere, whether it was our electrical thing, but I remember there was a line loss.
Could have all ended with broke down, and then, yeah, had line loss on there.
Yes.
Yep.
And I know we talked about it, you know, when our whole generation thing with our electric committee, that was a discussion when we first started, it's about, you know, and again, with Ray being new, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah, and there was Nick in between too, so, we, it's just, it's been a few, I remember Kurt Kilburg being on the council, and for some reason, between four and seven percent sticks in my, I think the goal is four, you know, to get it.
Yeah.
If you guys could get it to four, that would always, to get it.
Be, be within four percent of charge and usage, you're gonna have some.
You're gonna, you're gonna have to have some more.
Yeah, you're gonna have a little bit, but what, again, if you're, if you're positive, somebody's getting overcharged.
Someone's getting overcharged, yeah.
Yeah, there's gotta be that, obviously, zero would be ideal, but, you know, what, what is acceptable, you know?
Yeah, I, I, yeah, that, that's a good idea, we probably should know that.
Yeah, I guess that's the question, you know, like, what is acceptable, and where are we at?
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Okay.
Because wouldn't that, is that the reason that we're doing this, this meter program, is the, the line loss was up or down?
Oh, I don't think that had to do with it, I'm sure.
Just a random check.
Just a random check?
It's just a service that.
It was really just a service they offered, but.
Yeah.
When they took us in, they say, hey, we'll all give this, 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 next. And this is one of the services they offer?
But, yeah, but to me, it's one of those things that all of a sudden, let's just say it's four percent, you know, and now, all of a sudden, it's seven, you make that phone call, hey, we got something going on, can you come check out some meters?
Right.
You know?
I think that's the purpose behind the service they offer, yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
Instead of just, hey, let's just do what we have done, for once, you know? But then if a red flag comes up, then you, yeah.
Yeah, and that would be nice to know.
Need to keep on going with our poll inspections too.
Yes.
Now, is that something, since we're on the electrical, is that like the electric board that they oversee, like, electric rates, checking on the poles, and all this other maintenance we got, besides the power plant?
Well, you know, we had, we had our electric committee, you know, we were meeting quite often when we were doing the, um, getting somebody hired and going through that process, and then the whole generation. You know, and, and honestly, we've kind of fallen off on that, probably something we should revisit and do, because, you know, we've had, um, recommendations from, who's our, who do we call if we have high voltage issues? Sugar Valley?
Uh, I don't believe.
Right.
I think everything's aligned now.
Is it aligned now, aligned?
Yeah.
You know, I don't remember if it was aligned, somebody went through and had recommendation, thinking we need to fix up, we had a, we had a hit list.
Yeah, that, that was from.
Naming that to the list, so, the, the committee needs to probably have someone, go back on that again, look at some of that again, with Ray, see what Ray's hands on it. And then maybe, you know, Teresa coming on board took a big chunk of that away from us having to do all that to you.
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah, cause I, I know there's a lot of maintenance outside of the, um, you know, power plant, so.
Crossarms and poles and.
We, we sunk a whole lot of heart, heart and soul and money into the power plant, that's, that's where everything has been so pissed down, now we need to go back out and. Redeep in the distribution and.
Our transformer or substage, you know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of maintenance to.
So I guess, my, I guess my question then is, and I, I don't know, so, who, who makes sure Ray is doing this?
Teresa.
Teresa, okay, so then Teresa goes with the electric committee and all this then?
Well.
Cause I don't know what, what.
I'm gonna say no, not, not so much, I mean, Teresa's, Teresa does her, her and Ray do their thing. You know?
Yeah, I mean, she could.
Cause like, it would be the sewer or water and.
Yeah.
You know, garbage and everything else at this point, you know, but, but again, I think it's good to, I guess the committee by should get with Teresa and Ray and see what we can do to help. You know, and that's one thing I was thinking too, we talked about, and kind of getting off, you know, to have a, um, a supervisor, you know, come and maybe once a month, and just give us an update, so we can have these conversations, whether it's.
Yeah.
Eric, or it's Ray, or it's, you know, but just come and, just take fifteen minutes to talk about what they've got going on in their world and answer these questions.
Yeah, cause I, I don't, I don't know, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, Teresa handles the, you know, the day to day stuff, but obviously, you know, the committee is there, you know, to kind of give guidance, and, you know, the council too, as, as far as that goes, um, as far as what they wanna see done and.
You know, so maybe come first here, those are some things we need to hit again, what, what are some things we need to.
I know Teresa's talked about that as well, and especially now that we're approaching budget time, have the guys come and.
Yeah.
You know, not only answer questions, but what do we need and.
Yeah, exactly, I think it'd be, because I'm sure they got questions just as for us as much as we have for them, but I don't think it needs to be every meeting, but just once a month, one person shows up.
I'd like to hear.
Once a month, long utilities, they alternate.
Yeah, I, I think that would be wonderful.
Yeah, I'd like to see that them alternate.
Yeah, and Teresa can decide which meeting is better to do, if we got a bunch of items, then maybe it's the next meeting, you know, and, cause it'll take some time.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, man, I, I'd like to see that, just to, you know, cause I don't wanna be surprised, if there's something they need or want, or, you know, well, let's hear it, so we can either try to work it in the budget, or, we're not getting surprised when some.
It's overwhelming when they all, four of them come at once, you know, during crunch time.
Exactly, and that gives us time as committee members, and if it's, if there's, we can dig into it, do our diligence and figure it out, you know?
Well, theoretically, there you go, again, five year plan. Ten year plan. Yeah, I like that idea, they can kind of rotate in.
Just brings, we all, we all have, we can all work off the same expectations, the more we, the more we communicate.
Yeah, we're here to support them too.
Oh, absolutely.
I don't, I didn't see him out there.
Did he get a call or what?
He had a phone call, but I don't see him in any vehicle out here, even, unless he, unless he went over to the station.
Walk out, he went that way.
I called dispatch, see if he's on a call. Well, you get connections, don't you?
Drop a test.
You know people.
Well, yeah, otherwise, we just have to be consistent. Well, yeah, otherwise we just have to peek and see if he's over at the station or something.
Yeah, see if he's over there, and then I'll call dispatch.
Uh, let's see, I don't know, I guess, yeah, that's the next name, so. Um, I just want to wait and. I don't know how you guys wanna do this, do you wanna do individually, or at the same time, and just kind of go? Speak your names.
Same time, get it done.
Thank you for your service.
Yeah, I come down. See, in there?
Where's the check?
Squad's gone.
Oh, get a check.
Here, why?
We can, I can get it some.
So actually, it's you and these two that are.
I think everyone.
Matt, Matt and Adam.
I did my office.
Okay. So it's just those three.
Still got your picture taken.
Oh, you're not getting out of it just because you're proactive.
I'm just over here taking the pictures like I was there.
A little weird, a little girl.
He doesn't even get a break at the holidays.
Carol, where are you wanting?
Just everybody kind of clustered together over there, everyone, pretend you like each other a little, anyway.
Good, just good?
We're good. So go ahead and start, or have them repeat after you, or however you're doing it.
Okay, I'll just, you can just repeat after me, and then when I say the name, you can just each say your name, and go from there, so. Um, okay, so I.
Jason Thompson.
Adam Ryder.
Matt Peterson.
Matt Girardi. Do solemnly swear.
Sowland swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and partially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties.
Discharge all the duties.
Of the Office of City Council.
Of the City Council.
In Jackson County.
In Jackson County.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law. Who's assigned a radio, doing twice?
Okay, so. Um, fifteen, uh, update on the consensus and gathering, uh, updated numbers, um, everybody got it? Lady sent out another sheet regarding the consensus, and anybody listening to, uh, if you have not, um, if you did not, register for the consensus, how do they?
The census, yeah, um. We're just trying, we felt the numbers, um, we shouldn't have probably maybe grown a lot, but we didn't think we should have lost that many.
Yeah.
And then just random talking with people, no, we didn't fill it out, or we didn't get anything, didn't know, you know, how to reply, and especially the older ones. So, and the people are, I just got twenty-five thousand dollars in payments today, and people are returning them, so I think, um, the majority so far have been taking it seriously, but yeah, we would just like to encourage that, keep, keep people to continue getting those to us, so we can get an accurate vote.
Yes, yes.
And whether, and we have to have, um, documentation to attest it.
That's what I was gonna say, so this is basically to petition, basically, the, the state, um, to, to have them recensus us, basically, recount. Because, you know, this plays such a huge deal, um, in the funding that we get at the city, um, if we're below a thousand, which we're at, we're like nine forty-nine, is what we came in at, um, so.
What would we prior, a thousand twenty-eight, or something like that?
Thousand twelve.
Thousand twelve.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can't believe we would go down that much.
That's a lot.
Yeah, so, yeah, so, um, just trying to get the word out there that, that, um, yes, they need to please let us know if they have or haven't, and.
So if someone says something, hey, what about this census, do they call, call the city then, or how do they fill up this form?
It's just a, all we need is a name.
Yeah.
Physical address, and how many people were living there in April of twenty twenty.
It just came in the mail, yeah, and then they can just drop it off at the drop box, or.
All people are putting them in the drop box, or bringing them over, or bill pays.
Yeah, however.
We did put, I think, a deadline, that we'd like to see them back, and that.
Yeah, December thirtieth.
End of the month, maybe.
No later than the end of the month, yeah.
I haven't got the mail, obviously, so.
Yeah, so again, but, just to speak to the importance of it, that's, that's why we're redoing this, so we can try to get back above the thousand, uh, threshold, so we can have our, our funding and our grant money that we're eligible for, um, obviously, be increased, because that's the biggest thing for this, for this, for the census, so.
That's something you could put on Facebook, too, to remind people to do that.
Yeah, it's been on a couple times, but, you know.
Keep, you know, just keep hitting it.
I, we put it on the web, I have to get the website, or have them update the website for that, and, uh, Preston Growth and Development upcoming meeting, so.
And actually, the Census Bureau is very active on getting, getting after people that did not report.
Yeah, I'm sure it helps them.
Is there a couple of people say that one? Okay, seriously, because you either got, you either got a phone call, or you got a postcard, or. And apparently, they have access to maybe cell numbers, somebody said?
I'm not sure, I guess. On that, but, uh, anyway, um, yes, please, please return them, um, at your earliest convenience. Um, so that's it for that, um, other business?
Just the only thing that, um, Teresa wanted me to remind everybody, that the Preston Growth and Development meeting is Thursday at the sixteen.
Okay. So this Thursday at six?
I think it's at six, yeah, I did get the time.
Do you want me to find out if Bill can just come in back, or?
You might just do it another time.
I can, yeah, I can.
He's, and.
Yeah, this is.
It's just for.
Yeah. Yep, um, so, okay, other than that, um, I don't have anything else, so. That's for a motion for adjournment. Oh, you do adjourn. Second? Okay. You have a roll call, please?
I mean, that should lead the motion.
Me. My second.
Matt Girardi.
Yep.
Jason Thompson.
Yes.
Matt Peterson.
Yes.
Rick Peterson.
Yes.
Adam Ryder.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, everybody.
Well, thank you, Mr. Meyer.
You're welcome.